Good evening and welcome to the March 11, 2019, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. In accordance with open-meeting law, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience also recording. Seeing none, could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, in the name of our God, in the name of His majesty, and of His justice.
Before we begin, I am sure you can see there are only three selectmen here tonight. Any vote that, any agenda item that's before us tonight will need all three vote in favor of the motion in order for it to pass. So when I get to your agenda item, it's up to you whether you want to move forward or whether you want to hold it for another meeting till there's a full complement of the board. I don't see anything extremely controversial, but certainly it's your option to wait until the next Board of Selectmen because, as I said, you'll need all three votes in favor to pass any motion tonight. Having said that, we have a petition by National Grid for pole and wire location hearing at Homestead Avenue. It is a 7:00 PM hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there anyone here for this item? Great. If you could come up and join us, please, at the table. This is at Homestead and Bryn Mawr Avenue. First, just give your name for the record and then tell us what.
My name is Steve Susie, designer for National Grid. And right now, the reason why we're putting the pole is we have on both sides of Homestead Ave., on both of the west and the east side of Bryn Mawr Ave., both those pole lines are being supported by tree guys into a tree. We did have some customers didn't want the tree guy, but regardless if they want that anymore, or when we see a tree guy, we want them to remove him, put it on a pole, just because during storms, trees fall down, that'll take down the whole line. And we just want to put them on poles now. Plus, if we get it off the tree, the tree might, you know, some, when you put a tree guy into a tree, it grows around it. We can't really tighten it if we need to. It might cause those trees to die, and there's two big trees right on that side next to 80 Bryn Mawr Ave. But our plan is to, and I did stake it out and painted it as well, and the feet are approximate 83 feet, we'll put a new pole and two anchors. That is from Pole 5. It's 135 feet from Pole 22 in Bryn Mawr. How we staked and located, we should be able to put guy wires or support wires on the pole through the trees. We might have to do a little bit trimming, but we're not cutting the trees down. Maybe a major limb on one of them, but we should be able to put those two, you know, support wires through those trees and make like a V, so those two big trees can still grow in a healthy fashion. And that would also allow us to correct a low wire going to 80 as well, too. Those are the reasons why we're petitioning to put that new pole.
And the tree that you just mentioned that you may have to trim, are those on private property?
No, they would be or into, they seem to be, I'm guessing, five or six feet off the line, they would be within the street right away, or at least part of them would be.
Are there any questions? Are there any rebuttors here? If you could come up to the microphone there, the lectern, please, and just give your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Lou Aponte. Live at 80 Bryn Mawr Ave. That is the location where the proposed pole is to be placed, and we're going to disagree with that. We don't believe that that's an appropriate location. Certainly not happy with the way they have handled things recently in regards to the tree. The reason why this whole thing came about and we had a complaint with National Grid about having these guide wires in our tree is because last fall, National Grid came and they put yet another guide wire in the tree. And here we are tonight, Steve is indicating that they don't want to do that, but you just did it six months ago. So I do want to show you a picture of the tree that we're talking about, and you'll see why we don't want to have that, have the guide wires in the tree. So Steve did come. I did have a chance to speak with him. He did mark out where the proposed pole is going to be, and it's approximately four feet from the street, which is right next to where we have our fence for the backyard. And this is the first I've heard about having guide wires come down as well. I thought it was simply going to be the pole. So I want to show you another picture. This is a picture of the pole that has one of the guide wires going into our tree. That picture should be from, from the end of the street where you can see the corner of where Homestead and Bryn Mawr meet. I believe that what we, what should be considered is having a pole placed on that corner. If a pole is placed in that corner, it'll be, it's good for several reasons. One, it's not near our private property. It's on commercial property, which is the church. The other point is that in that location, there's the potential of utilizing that pole for both guide wires. The way that they have it set up right now, the tree has guide wires coming from Homestead as well as from Bryn Mawr Ave. So it's coming to the tree in two different locations. So if they go ahead and plant the pole on the corner of Bryn Mawr and Homestead, I believe that that would be sufficient enough to replace our tree as the guideline structure and utilize that new pole in that position for both of the guidelines.
Well, one thing is a corner.
Excuse me one second. Just wait till I finish with him and then acknowledge you. Did you have anything else?
I'm sorry. I wanted to show you this picture. This is the picture actually from, this is the corner of Bryn Mawr and Homestead. Here's the pole that's going into one of our trees. The other is over here across the street.
Well, if you look at the reason why we have to, basically where the pole, new pole six, is going to be, that is, needs to be there because it's in line with both pole lines. We have to put them straight behind in order to support it. If you put it off angle, the poles are going to fall, they're not going to be supported right. So it would, it would be completely against engineering principles to put something in front of the church or the church's property, and they could come and dispute that as well. They won't be happy with that. But then it wouldn't be supporting our poles properly, because now you're making an angle and you're causing things to lean. And especially since Pole 5 is an underground service for the church, if that pole starts to lean and go backwards, now you're ruining what their service as well, because it's an underground wire that's attached to that pole, that would wreck havoc with that. So what we basically are doing with Pole 6 is the way it's situated, and you could see that on the angles of where the lines are, everything's, it's following basically the path of where the guy wires are, but it's not attached to the tree, it'll just go through them. But everything will be completely supported in the proper angles on both sides. Because what would happen then, we'd have to put a push brace or another guy in another pole to support the wrong angle that we just created by putting it on in front of Bethel Lutheran Church, so that wouldn't really be an option.
Is that all you have right now?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so, you know, he wants to talk about the angles coming down. Right now, with the tree and the new proposed pole, that is a different angle as well. It's not perfectly aligned in that fashion. And so one of the things I was doing when I was taking a look at what's out there, you know, it's funny, when this came up, I started going around every street I go down, I'm looking at utility poles, I'm seeing how they have things set up. A couple of things that came to light. One is having a push pole, which I'm not sure why that would be an issue.
Can I explain those?
Okay. Another would be a stronger pole on that dead-end line. That's what that is essentially, a dead-end line, because the power's not continuing on. That's like the end of the road for that power line. So possibly having a stronger pole in place. I've actually seen a lot of dead-end poles with nothing. It's just, it's just there and it is not supported by any guide wires or any additional pole or anything else. Guess that's it.
Well, actually, these are both, you don't really see dead-end primary, poles dead-ended, maybe if it's a light, small secondary wire, but we're talking prime wire, primary wires on both sides. So these have to be dead-ended properly. We replaced it, it is equal in line, he's mistaken. It is as straight as he could possibly get it by putting it where I placed the pole. The reason why we can't have push braces, because if we put a push brace on Pole 5, the push brace will go into the driveway for Bethel Lutheran Church, and it would take up even the sidewalk along that road. The same thing, a push brace on Pole 22. How the lines are situated is that we wouldn't be in order, because those lines are already there, in order to put a push brace on that, it would have to go into the roadside. The lot line for that pole, and there is a granite marker, is only maybe, you know, one foot, say, north on the northern side of those wires. So if we put a push brace on the other side, it's going to go into the property of 81 Bryn Mawr, and they're not going to most likely allow this, and we would need an easement for them, and they can reject it. To put it into the road because of how the road is situated on there, that push brace is going to be within a foot of the road. So plows would hit that and maybe even ride up it and, you know, cause some problems with that. So push braces for this are not an option, you know, on both cases, because they're taking up sidewalk, they're putting it into driveways, they're putting it. From the fence here, where I put it at Pole 6, because I have the two anchors there on angles supporting both sides, those both anchors will be in front of Mr. Aponte's fence. So if that fence is near a property line, and that's the property line, we are in public property, not his private property. So we stake them and we are putting in for those sidewalk guys that would basically go straight down. So people would still be able to walk underneath them, but we'll be able to put those in in front of that fence.
Thank you. I'm going to hear from the town manager next and then open it up for board comments.
Sure. Just a, first thing, just a question. If this were to proceed, what would you do with the existing pole?
We are placing Pole 6 and we're putting the new Pole 6, and nothing else is being changed.
You would not be removing Pole 5?
We'd be replacing it in the same spot, and we have to cut and kick and put it in the same spot because the underground wire is there. So we would get, we're asking them to have two trucks hold it, would cut the pole, take it off, and they'll keep their service in the year hanging, and then we would put the new pole in the same place.
Okay. And just a quick question, because I couldn't tell from the photos. Are there light fixtures attached? Is this a light pole?
For, let me see, there is.
The one on Bryn Mawr.
No, Bryn, well, Pole 22 in Bryn Mawr has a light, but that's, we're not changing the pole, that's not going to be affected.
Okay.
And the Pole 5 at the, that does not have a street light on it.
Does not? Okay.
There's street lights on Pole 4.
Thank you. The reason I was asking, because of the procedure that we're moving forward with, with National Grid for the LED streetlight purchases, I just didn't know if that was going to affect anything. The agreement's being reviewed right now by town council, so I didn't want to have any change to that agreement. But if it's not a light pole, then it won't affect that agreement. Although we may have other questions before the end of the hearing. Thanks.
I'm going to open up to board members what your thoughts on our moving forward with this.
Couple of questions. So Pole 22, that is, once it's fed from Pole 6, is that what feeds both sides now of Bryn Mawr and then down Homestead?
Well, the line for Bryn Mawr is, you know, when I show Pole 24 to Pole 22, there's no wires except for those support wires. Pole 6 will just be really supporting those both, both sides of Homestead Ave. Right now, there's nothing in between other than those support wires into the tree.
I guess what I'm saying is, so Pole 20, 24, 23, 22, and 21, you need Pole 6 to hold them up? Is that what you're saying?
Well, if you're looking on here at Homestead Ave.,
Yeah.
There's a line going to Pole 8, Pole 7 and Pole 8. That primary line, and that's a three-phase line, will be pulling on Pole 22. If there's nothing to support that, Pole 22 in a number of years will start leaning over, and that will cause problems. It'll start pulling on the wires, and everyone down the street, those wires will start to move and stretch out, service wires even too, and that's why we need to support it. Otherwise, that's going to bow towards Pole 7 and 8 if it's not supported. It's straight now because of those tree guys. Take those tree guys out and no supports, it's going to be leaning in the future.
So if you were to put Pole 6 on the corner of Homestead and Bryn Mawr to support, does, I guess what I'm saying is, does 6 have to be attached to 5? Or are you saying that it's 6 and 5 and 4 that's, that's keeping 8 and 7 and 22 where they're supposed to be?
Well, Pole 6, right now, the tree guys are keeping into the tree, are supporting Poles 3, 4, and 5 in a straight line, and another tree guy is supporting the straight line of 22, Pole 7, and Pole 8. So if you put the new pole, take the tree guys out, and then put them on a pole, that will support everything evenly. We can't put it on the corner of Bryn Mawr because now you're off angle at Pole 5. We would have to put, you know, two poles basically to support that. Putting it where it is, you're supporting both sides together in one pole. If we put a pole directly across from Pole 22, say at the corner of 80 Bryn Mawr Ave, right beside Bryn Mawr Ave, we're still in the tree limbs. We'd have to cut down several tree limbs to do that. Plus, we're still not really supporting everything correctly for Pole 5, because now you're causing a little bit of an angle, which would cause Pole 5 to lean back into the church and cause problems with their service.
Do they have underground?
Excuse me. Sir, just wait.
If it's attached to Pole 5.
We're not going to go back and forth like that. If you have a question, just, I'll acknowledge you once the board members have finished their questions.
I do have something. I do have another picture I wanted to share.
I will once the board members have finished their questions.
Mr. Berthew?
And continuing, so where is the wire that supports 80 Bryn Mawr? Is that coming between, is that a wire coming across between 22 and 21?
The service wire that gives his house electricity comes from Pole 22 across the road, and it sags in order to go underneath a major limb, then back up into his house. If we have Pole 6 where it is, we'll put secondary Pole 22 to Pole 6 to Pole 5, and then we'll just do a short midspan directly to their service, so there would be no safety issues with some low wires going across Bryn Mawr.
Do you have?
Or we cut down a major limb and make everything straight from Pole 22 to his house.
Do you have anything else?
I'm okay for now.
Mr. Carpenter, do you have anything?
No, I'm not going to vote to close the hearing because it sounds like they need to meet and come to some understanding before we can make a final decision.
Well, I've already met, and we've already, there's no other options, and I've already explained the options to that. If I come back and I put a push brace right into the driveway of the church and blocks their sidewalk, they're not going to be happy. They're not going to be happy with, and we're not going to be with something out in front of theirs which is not going to support anything properly. If you look at the diagram, that's in the perfect spot to support both. And there's really not much we can do with moving Pole 5 because the underground service for the church is on Pole 5, so that, we can't move that back or anything, or do anything with that without someone paying for the church to completely redo their service. And this is existing, so we wouldn't, by our charter with the state and our rates, that we can't, you know, pay them to redo our service. This is existing.
Mr. Aponte, did you have something else?
Yeah, I did have a couple of other pictures here that I think are pertinent. One is showing a different style guide wire. Another one is showing the push pole, where it's showing that there's a four-foot difference between the embedded pole and the push pole. So I wanted you to have this so you can see what we're talking about.
I don't know where he got that, but our standard push brace is a minimum of 15 feet, basically, on a standard pole.
Engineer, so this doesn't mean anything to me.
Yeah. I'm sure if I can just ask a question.
Certainly.
Mr. Aponte, are you?
This is a question to you, Mr. Aponte.
Are you troubled by how the service is currently? Do you just want it to remain the way it is, where the wires are? Is that? Well, no, we don't like it in the tree because, as you can see from the picture that I showed you, it has compromised the top half of the tree right now. The big concern is that National Grid just came out and put another line on there. We didn't know anything about that, and that was a concern. We don't want any more lines in the tree. Certainly, we agree that we want the lines out, but we don't agree that the only option is to have the pole put right next to our fence. We don't, we don't agree with that.
Mr. Carpenter, did you?
Now, I've done a little bit of research, I've shown some pictures, and I think they're relevant, and I don't understand why Steve is saying that they're not.
Go ahead, you can respond to that.
Because this is my job, and I've been doing it for 10 years. So in some cases, like you said, we don't put tree guys anymore. If someone does it temporarily, just because something is compromised and is doing something so something doesn't fall down, yes, we make temporary fixes time. We put on a crack pole, we put two braces on side of them, and we drill them together so we can get power on and wires off the street, but that means we come back later and we fix it permanently. So if someone did something temporary, this is completely, tree guys now are completely out of our standards, and we're trying to correct it. But in order to do that, we have to put a pole somewhere on that northern side of, on 80, or two poles, because we can't put push braces. So there's really no option. This is a push brace that will go into the driveway of Bethel Lutheran Church and really take up the sidewalk. A push brace on Pole 22 that will be within a foot of the street pavement, which for plows and stuff, that's not, that's going to get hit and really damage the plow because it might run up on it. We don't have an option of putting the push brace because of the property line onto, or, you know, on the northern side of the wires between Pole 22 and 7, because it'll be on 81 Bryn Mawr Ave. You know, I don't do things haphazardly here. I looked at all the options that I could, as you can, you know, see, and based on the drawings on here, that Pole 6 is where it is, and that's just following where those tree guy wires are, basically. We're just moving them a few feet and putting them on a pole. But a pole has to be put onto that spot on the northern side of Homestead Ave, you know, before the property line of 80 in order to support both things properly.
So I actually am in agreement with Mr. Carpenter about continuing the hearing. I know that you two have said that you've already had conversations, but I think at this point, we might consider asking, although this isn't his job, ask Mr. Coyle, who rep who is our town engineer, where we've talked about a lot of engineering terminology, as well as comments regarding the plowing. We may want to have some input from him. Mr. Berthew?
I agree with both of you. The mention of underground wires, are there any options whatsoever with underground wires?
No, because when we granted service to Bethel Lutheran Church, they put their wires on that pole. We move the pole, then they're going to have to pay an electrician to redig and redo their wire to the new pole location, and that would have to be at their cost. So because we already have it agreed, Pole 5 is where it is, that, you know, we can't move that pole location. Even if we don't put Pole 6 where it is, it's just going to end up putting more poles. If I put a pole to, to a dead-end Pole 5, because it's on angle, now we need another pole across right between the lot line of 9 and 80, 9 Homestead Ave and 80 Bryn Mawr. But now we need, that would just support the off angle for the next pole, say 5-50, which will go alongside the church. So now I have to put two poles right next to each other, plus another pole or something to support Pole 22. So you're just making off angles and making more poles in order to get the proper support. So you'd end up, instead of one pole, you'd end up maybe with three poles, or two poles in a push brace. This Pole 6 where it is, even though someone doesn't want, you know, the look of it in front of their house, there's going to be, in order, if I can't do it there, I have to put two more poles and two more anchors, plus something else, a push brace or another pole for Pole 22. So, and that wouldn't be a perfect, but now you're talking three poles, you know, right in the same area when one will do it.
Did you have anything else?
No.
Are there any other rebuttors here tonight? Okay, since we have no more seats, if you could go up to the lectern, please, just give your name and address for the record. You can, there's a lectern right behind, okay. That's, that's whatever you prefer.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Aponte from 80 Bryn Mawr Ave. And my question is, where Mr. Susie was just talking about putting up two or possibly even three poles, why would that be a problem instead of the one you were discussing earlier?
Mr. Susie, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, because then you'd have, you'd still have a pole in front of your fence, you know, in front of basically the lot line because there's a driveway at 9, and even still, that's still an off angle. You're talking about a, another pole in front of your property, then another one as well, and a third one in order to get everything properly aligned and accounted for the angles.
Did you have anything else? The board members have anything else? Is there a motion?
I would like to see that, a diagram of what you said with, with the two or three poles as well. So we have this diagram, and then the, the diagram, if you went across, and then, I agree, we should have Mr. Coyle come in, but for the next meeting, I would like to see a diagram of what you would do if you had to go across to, let's say, right in front of 9, and then come down if you think there's two or three poles, to show us where that is. And maybe the Apontes can see that and, you know, see if there's some sort of a mutual agreement there. But, you know, I know you're saying it's offset, and I know we're looking at a small kind of, you know, not exact map, and to my fault, I didn't drive by there the last couple of days because we usually don't have any opposition to poles. So now that there is, I'd definitely like to, to drive by and take a look at that myself as well. So I'll make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a I'll make a motion to hold the...
Continue.
Continue the petition to, for the meeting.
March 25th, or the following meeting at April 8th? Is it April 8th?
Would you have enough time, Mr. Susie, to do, have that for the 25th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So the 25th would be fine.
So there's a motion to continue the hearing till March 25th. Is there a second? We're under discussion, Mr. Carpenter.
I just, if we're going to ask, Bill, I think we should do that within context before we do the continuation, just so that it's within the hearing versus continuing it and then taking a motion outside of the hearing.
Okay.
You want me to withdraw?
I think, I think that we can just, you know, under discussion, ask the town manager to...
Right. Through the chair, that's what I would recommend. You schedule the continued hearing for 3:25. If Mr. Coyle doesn't have an opportunity to review it by then, you can just, at that meeting, take no action, keep the hearing open, continue it again to the following meeting. In the meantime, I'll check with him and see if he can get out there and take a look before the 25th.
I mean, as long as it gets done.
Okay. So just under discussion, so, you know, we always encourage conversation. Now, our town DPW director, who serves as our town engineer, is going to be involved. So you can call the town manager's office for his information so that you can, you can speak with him as well. Okay? Yes, sir?
And no one from Bethel Lutheran Church is here.
No, I asked if there were any other...
If we're putting now two poles on their side of the street, then the pastor or the Reverend there, he's going to be more, to come over and disapprove of that, too. So, but I will contact him and say, no, okay, here's the new plan. Make sure someone, if you care, is on the, at the meeting, too. So sometimes this happens where people, I don't want a poll and put it on your side, no, I want it on your side, and the town will have to make a decision.
So I'll consult with the town manager, but this petition is specific to this poll. If Mr. Berthew is, I mean, what he's asked for is a sketch. If we're looking to vote on additional polls, then I believe it would require a new hearing, newer abutter notification, and another vote. Am I correct on that?
I believe it does.
Okay, yeah. So, so, so you, I mean, we can request that he complete that diagram, the sketch that you've asked, but the, the hearing is specific for this one poll, and if the board even considers asking for the additional polls, then we'll have to, we have options. We could deny the first one, and they, they would have to refile for two polls. We would have to advertise the hearing and notify abutters again. Is, is this time-sensitive?
No, it's not time-sensitive, just because it's only going to be, are there going to be any different abutters because we're putting it in front of 80?
I'm just saying that for the record, in case there's any, you know, I mean, I have to see where those two poles would fall and who falls within that 300 feet of a abutters.
Okay.
I don't, so I can't answer that question. I don't know if there'll be additional abutters. It's just, it's just procedurally, that's what we need to do.
That's right. How many days do you need to get...
The hearing?
Or notice to the abutters? If I get the sketch done, say, tomorrow, or, you know, Wednesday, would that be enough time to, to list all the other abutters?
But, but it's not, but it's, even if you got the sketch done, we couldn't vote on the, the new proposal because this hearing is specific to this one poll at 80 Bryn Mawr Ave.
Okay, I'm just wondering because you...
Just procedurally, you know, legally, legally, we can't do it. This is, this is a legal hearing. We opened the hearing. We took testimony. We can't change the purpose of the hearing. We would have to either close the hearing and take new action, or deny the first poll, schedule a new hearing, and notify abutters. You can't, you can't change the position or the addition of poles within a hearing.
No, and I was just wondering if I, if we do set a new, you know, a petition for those new pole locations, and we can get that out in time, can we have both hearings for next week, or the next of the 25th?
Forty-eight hour posting notification is what we need.
Oh, okay.
Is there any other additional? Yeah. Okay. The hearing is 48 hours, abutter notification is 10 days.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is, this, if this motion passes, the hearing is continued to March 25th. All those in favor? Any opposed? The hearing is continued to March 25th at 7:00 PM.
I have one question for you. We never got a copy of the plan. Can we make sure we get a copy?
You can, you can call the manager's office in the morning.
I have, I have copies here.
Unless he has copies here.
Action.
Okay. Thank you both. Thank you for your comments. Moving on, under Board of Selectmen General Items, we have a seasonal open-air license on town property for Troop 53 in Auburn for a flower sale at the Auburn Fire Station at 47 Auburn Street on Mother's Day weekend. Good evening. You're back. Come on and join us. No, you can come up here.
Thank you so much.
Come on. We can hear you better. It's a little homey.
How are you?
If you could just give us your name again for the record?
Sure. My name is Davy Keys. I'm the Scout Master for Troop 53 in Auburn. And we're, we're looking to hold our annual flower sale at the fire station. And I've talked to Chief Coleman, sent an email, and we've got approval for that. He's actually here tonight, so, you know, we're going to use the adjacent lot next to the fire station like we normally do, and we'll, we'll set up Friday night, and then hopefully we'll sell out on Saturday, but sometimes we stay till noon time on Sunday.
Okay. Do members have any questions? This is a formality. You've got to come in before us, so thank you.
Normally, I have some scouts helping me out, but tonight they were busy, so they've got another event.
Well, that's okay. Is there anyone here who wants to comment on this? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the license, provided with all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license subject to all conditions stated upon it, fair to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there an additional motion?
Make a motion that we approve the label of the field. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did us a vote. Thanks. Have a wonderful, successful Mother's Day sale.
Thank you.
Next, we have a one-day outdoor entertainment license for Faith Baptist Church for an Easter egg hunt on April 13th at Lemansky Park. Good evening. If you could come up? First, I need both of your names for the record.
Patricia Lake, I'm the children's pastor at Faith Church.
Doug Gies, pastor at Faith Church.
Welcome. Could you tell us, we have some information in our packet, but could you give us a little summary about what you plan on doing?
Sure. We would like to sponsor our second annual Easter egg hunt at Lemansky Field in the upper field. There was a date change due to the field availability after talking with Kristen. She suggested that Sunday, April 14th, was the better date because of a soccer event that's happening on Saturday at that field. There was also a slight change on the time from 3:00 to 6:00 because it's Sunday rather than Saturday. We are petitioning to use Lemansky Field. We have met with the board there. They have given us some parameters, some things that we needed to follow in order to be permitted for this event. All the applications are in. I believe you have the insurance binder from us as well. And hope to have a fun afternoon for the kids and families there. It involves some bounce houses, a craft and bubble station. We do realize that we're responsible for additional, additional toileting facilities, set up, break down trash. I've also been in touch with the Board of Health on how we're going to handle the eggs and how they'll be transported. Safety and security, we've been in touch with the police department for additional police detail. And we'll be using Ticket Leap for our online registration and keeping our registration to 1,500 total people. There'll also be a lost and found and first aid station available that will be manned by certified first aid personnel.
Does the members have any questions? I'm just addressing a procedural question with the town manager because it was actually listed on our agenda as April 13th.
I through the chair, but the abutter notification went out for the correct date of the 14th?
I believe Rachel did do that, Rachel Pressey, because we talked about it after I did the application for the field. And Kristen got back to me and told me what was going on. She suggested that we do the Sunday. I guess the soccer event's a pretty big event that's all day.
Issues with the posting is my concern. I'm not looking to hold up your event. I'm concerned with the open meeting law and the requirements of posting.
I think, through the chair, I think you can make amendments to an agenda item as you're discussing the item. This wasn't a required hearing that had to be posted. This is an agenda item, so I think it's probably fair to just say it's, it was either a scribner's error, or it was actually intended at the time you filed it. But then the notification, the legal notifications went out with the correct date. So, and I look at the town clerk for open meeting law, would that be fine to amend an item on, on the floor? I believe you can. So that shouldn't be an issue. I would be more concerned about the abutter notification having to be redone, but that's been done with the appropriate date.
So, so because it's not a hearing, I just entertain a motion, a quick motion to amend the agenda to, to reflect April 14th.
Make a motion that we do that, and the hours are 12 to 6, is that correct?
Three to six.
The actual event is three to six, but Kristen was letting us use the field in order to get set up and then have cleanup following.
Just so that, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion just to amend our agenda. Board of Selectmen, item 5B to April 14th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? That's taken care of. I'm all about the procedures, if you couldn't tell from the last...
Understood.
Are there any abutters here? Seeing none. And you've met, I know you've met at length with DCG.
Yes.
About how many did you have last year?
Too many.
Too many.
Too many.
So how are we, how are we handling?
Probably double this number that we're hoping for this year. So Ticket Leap is going to keep our numbers down to a manageable size, to 1,500, that we, we're confident that on the field, we can manage that, that large of a crowd. But last year was, was a larger event than what we were planning on. So that's why this year, it's going to be severely managed through, through registrations and check-in. So we'll have a very, very stringent check-in with queues, that only those who have, have gone through that online procedure of going through, and they will be checked in that way.
Similar to your Christmas giveaway.
Exactly.
And I was very impressed with the organization with that number of people, you know, how you moved people in and out, kept people safe, and so I don't have any concerns personally. Are there any questions?
Just, were there any, you know, you had, besides overcrowding, did you have any other issues last year?
Not that we were aware of. The parking was a concern, but the police did a fabulous job of managing the parking last year. But now we're thinking, okay, with a group of 1,500, that will be much more manageable. And again, we're, you know, counting on the police to do, just like they did last year. They were, they were fantastic.
So the only other issue, and I'll let the town manager raise it, and I know it's, it's come before us, there are different laws that regulate hours for events like this on a Sunday. So Ms. Jacobson?
Through the chair, so I just want to verify. I believe Mass General Law has a provision that events taking place on Sunday that are open to the public and in outdoor public spaces have to take place at a certain period of time during the day. I think it is prior to 6:00 PM, so I think you're fine. But if the board could take a, a vote contingent on us, just verifying that that 5:00 time is okay, I'd just be more comfortable with that. I just want to double-check that law.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else? Do you have anything else, Shawna? Great, thanks. Is there a motion?
I'll check it tomorrow.
Motion that we approve the license, subject to all the applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its boards, commissions, departments have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it, fair to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon it, and the additional condition that the board has asked us.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Great. I hope you have a great, fun event. Thank you for what you do.
Thanks.
So I hate keeping everyone waiting. Should we just keep going in order?
Make a motion that we move up item, what is the bond, to the fair city. Motion will move up...
No, he's doing the bond with the clerk, and move up agenda item E1? I'm sorry.
Five, aye.
Five, aye.
Vote, sign notes for bond anticipation.
There's a, a motion to move up the bond item. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Mr. Casnovich?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, you're being asked to sign some State House notes relative to our LED streetlight project. We were, before you were at your last meeting, asking authorization to sign some bonds for a bond issue that also included proceeds to fund that project. This is a little different. We are expecting an offset through some incentives and some grants that will allow us to reduce the cost. We don't want to permanently bond that because we know we're getting money in. Once we get that money in, we'll pay down these notes. Therefore, a long-term borrowing is not necessary in order to meet that obligation. So this is just a bridge. This is just a short-term gap to fund our obligation to get the project done. Once those incentive grants come, that money comes in, we'll pay down the notes, and we'll no longer have to go off for short-term borrowing.
Are there any other, Mr. Berthew?
I'll just make a motion that the sale of the $82,049 bond anticipation note dated March 15th, 2019, known as the note, to Hometown Bank at the price of $82,049 is hereby, oh, make a motion to approve that $82,049 for, to get the bond anticipation note. So the motion is to approve...
We need, we need the entire language.
Well, the entire language, I don't think is reading right, so. It says, is hereby approved and confirmed. We haven't approved anything.
Madam Chair, this language was drafted by, by Bond Council, so it is exactly...
We want it read exactly that way?
Yes.
Okay, are we voting on this?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the sale of the $82,049 bond anticipation note dated March 15th, 2019, known as the note, to Hometown Bank at the price of $82,049 is hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on June 14th, 2019, and shall be at interest at the rate of 2.29%.
Is there a second?
Right.
Is there discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? You can come up, and we're happy to sign those. I'm sorry, can I use that? Just the State House note, which is only... This is one of three copies. And this is the certificate of this town. I like that, and that's it. That's it? Thank you. The two other copies?
That's right, yes.
I thought you said that was one of three.
We thought we were getting off light tonight. Going on.
It's the same thing, the three copies are the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Getting back to our agenda, we have a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the Drury Square Village for the May 7 annual town meeting. Welcome.
Good evening.
Through the chair, I'm going to turn to Adam Menard, our town planner. The next actual, couple of items are related to bylaws that are going, we're seeking a vote of the board to send it to the planning board for the requisite hearing process. But I'll turn to Adam to explain.
Yeah, Adam, thanks for waiting.
I think the first item you have on your agenda is the proposed Drury Square Village District bylaw. This has been worked on for, I believe, more than a year now since before I started. There's been several public meetings, collected comments. This draft you have in front of you has been vetted by town council, and it's going to be to the town council again for their further comment. So I ask you to pass this along to the planning board so we can schedule our public hearing.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we forward this to the planning board for the purposes of them to schedule a public hearing.
Is there a second? Any discussion under the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next item is proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the tiny house for the May 7, 2019 annual town meeting.
Yes, so the planning board at our last meeting tasked me with drafting a tiny home bylaw in kind of reaction to the citizens petition that's next on your list. There's a couple that's in town that's asking for this to be allowed in town. Currently, it's not allowed. So I've been working with the Board of Health, town engineering, economic development coordinator, and zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner to kind of draft this language. Currently, there's only one bylaw in the state that has tiny homes on the book, and it's in Nantucket. This is much more comprehensive than what they have on the books. We're trying to limit where they can go, the size and scope of a tiny home. Like to get, this is on the agenda for the planning board tomorrow night for their discussion. Some comment from them, and if the board, if this board decides to send it to the planning board, I'd like to schedule a public hearings. We have some public comment on this.
Through the chair, if I can add to that as well, because I know one of the members had asked, just for clarification, Mr. Carpenter had asked, we do, in the next item, we do have the citizens petition. So it is our intent through the planning board to put both the citizens petition on the warrant, because they did file that appropriately, it should go on the warrant. But there were some concerns with the language in the citizens petition, that it may not actually receive approval from the attorney general's office, which is why the planning board would like to have a tiny house bylaw, but they feel they need to strengthen the language, which is why they tasked Adam with drafting another one. So if these are both sent to the planning board for tomorrow night, they would have the hearings that are required, they would both be on the town meeting warrant in May. And then hopefully, after the public hearing process and working with the residents, the citizens petition, those who filed that would be as happy with the planning board draft, which may have a better chance of getting passed at the attorney general's office. So that's why you see two of them.
So the petitioners are aware of this and are supportive of this?
Yes, they received a copy of this draft that I have today. They're coming to the planning board meeting tomorrow to discuss with the planning board their, any of their concerns. And hopefully, we can get some amicable agreement and we can, they'll be happy with what we draft. And after the planning board meeting tonight, I'd like to get this draft viewed by town council, make sure he's happy with it, so everybody has their input.
Are there any questions?
Just one. Do we have to forward the citizens petition? Seems that it appears to be technically flawed.
I spoke to town council about this on Friday, and his feeling was it was, they did meet the requirements of a citizens petition. The language for the bylaw is probably flawed, but the citizens petition itself is a valid petition, was stamped in and certified. So his feeling wants to put it on, and then we can always, assuming that another one goes forward that they're happy with and the planning board is happy with, a motion can be made to table it indefinitely at town meeting. But his feeling was, since they did meet all the requirements, that we should put it on the warrant.
I'll make a motion that we forward the petition to the planning board for a required public hearing.
Okay, so this is agenda item D, which is the town's proposed amendment?
Either one.
Well, we have to take them both, so. Is there a second?
I'll second item D.
All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. Now we have agenda item E, which is a citizens petition for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for the tiny house for the May 7 annual town meeting. Is there a motion to transmit this to the planning board for a required public hearing?
I'll make the same motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Anything else?
I want to thank Adam, he's pulled together this bylaw draft pretty quickly, knowing we didn't have that much time to get it done to make the warrant for May. So thank you, thanks for the planning board.
Pleasure, thank you.
Is there a motion to move up agenda item 6A? All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. Chief? Good evening and welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening.
Just seeing if we have any paperwork on this. So since we were last together, I believe you were going before the finance committee to discuss this, so we were interested in hearing the finance committee's position on this and if there's any additional information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not submit any additional information as requested by you. I did forward Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Berthium the clip of the YouTube video from our meeting two weeks ago, along with the handout that was submitted. I did appear before the finance committee last Wednesday, all seven members were present, and the finance committee voted unanimously to support filing the application of the SAFER grant. So again, I'm back before you this evening asking for permission to file the grant, not to accept any funds, but to file the grant, and then in the event that we were to receive it, we would, I would come back before you so we could have the discussion as to whether or not we would accept funds.
Do members have any questions or comments? Mr. Carpenter.
Why a split motion?
I guess just to, comfort level for the board, that's up to you guys to make the motion. But even if it was the motion, as I've always said in the past, if we were successful, it would be my intent to come back to the board to have further discussion.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'm going to make a motion that we authorize a filing and acceptance of any funds as presented by the other chief.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, it's unanimous. Thanks for.
Thank you, I want to thank the board for your support on this project, so hopefully we have some good news, so. Thank you very much.
And once again, I want to comment about your Facebook page. It really does keep the public informed and up to date, whether it's road closures or outages, and something that's very telling is just how busy you are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you in your department for your hard work.
It is a team, it is a team effort. There's over a dozen people that contribute to our social media effort within the department, so they do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
We don't have anything else from the chief, correct?
If I can just add, chief, thank you for all the additional time that you spent with me and the questions and all the good information, so I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
As well as, I did watch the whole meeting, I didn't just watch the clip. Riveting watching. It was an excellent presentation, and you certainly made your case.
Anytime, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, have a good night. Stay safe. The next item we have is a drainless license for WW Contracting Corporation of Upton. It is in accordance with our policy. In the pocket you have referrals and, I mean, recommendations, and we have on the last page, the recommendation from the sewer commissioners. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the drainless license as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. Next, in gift acceptance in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, we have a gift to the fire department gift account from Lawrence Fitz in the amount of $200. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. We have an additional gift from Home Depot of Auburn, and it's in the form of equipment, an electric range and microwave, in the market value of $900, and this is for the highway department break room. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept with gratitude and allow it to be sent to the grantee, signed by the chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. Moving on to town manager items, we've taken care of the SAFER grant application. Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Jacobson, on the revised draft of the proposed debt management policy.
Correct, so you have before you a revised debt management policy, and I'm going to turn it to Ed Kaczynowicz, the Assistant Town Manager and CFO, to explain the process that we undertook with this and the comments and revisions proposed by the finance committee.
Thank you, Julie, and through the chair, to members of the board, we brought this to you at your last meeting, and then subsequent to that, we took it into the finance committee last Wednesday. We had some good discussions relative to the content contained within the policy. They felt as though, as a group, that they suggested an amendment to the original policy, and I highlighted that and read, and as I did a reread, there is a slight error here that I'd like to bring to your attention. So what's underscored and put in bold red is the amendment that was made by the finance committee, and it was voted unanimously by the entire finance committee. What it should read, until the tax levy annual contribution reaches $2 million, period. Once that limit has been reached, the town will make, strike A, will make $100,000 annual contributions, that will be plural, S at the end of contributions, to the town's capital improvement trust account. So it's a slight change. That was the intent of the finance committee, and it was voted 7-0. So I think we talked about the parameters and the content of the debt management policy when I brought it in. Nothing has changed, other than the fact of this amendment that was voted last Wednesday evening.
Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Carpenter.
I've spoken to the CFO, we communicated by email just under capital budgets, which is on page two at the bottom of the finance, the overall financial management policy. He had agreed to make inclusion of the new enterprise funds, because we have a footnote on the debt management that includes all of them. So I thought it should be consistent throughout the document so that there would be no confusion.
Madam Chair, and the finance committee recognizes that as well, that the capital budget portion of the existing financial policies needs to be amended as well to include not only what was identified as their amendment, but also we can amend it to reflect those funding sources as identified by Mr. Carpenter. So I would suggest two separate votes. One would be the adoption, if the board so wishes to do that tonight, of the amended debt management policy. And then separate action would have to be taken to amend the existing capital budget provision of the financial policies as previously adopted.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion regarding the amended?
I'll make a motion that we accept the amended draft.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed, it is unanimous. Is there an additional motion regarding the capital budget?
I'll just make a motion that the overall financial management policies under capital budgets be amended to include what we've discussed.
Is that clear for you, Sharon? Is there any discussion under that? All those in favor? Any opposed, so voted. Thank you, Mr. Kaczynowicz. Next is the vote to authorize the filing and acceptance of the 2018 SHSP CCP grant application. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair, we are working with the Auburn CERT team to identify eligible items to apply for this grant. We apply for this grant every year. We've been able to provide CERT members with vests and reflective gear, personal protection gear, portable radios, and training. And it is not on this application as to what the specific intent of the grant was, because CERT was still working on it, but I did receive it this morning, and they would like to apply for headlamp sets, individual headlamp sets, individual first aid kits, batteries, and traffic wands to use in the evening. These are all safety-type gear, allows them to better respond in an emergency situation or even in a non-emergency situation such as crowd control, parades, things like that. So the total grant that we're allowed to apply for, because it's formula-driven by population, is $3,500. I believe the grant was going to come in a little bit shy of that. We're going to try to get as much as we can onto that grant application. We're going to finalize the budget, and it's due this Friday.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize the filing acceptance of 2018 SHSP slash CCP Citizen Corp. program grant application in the amount of $3,500.
Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Is there any discussion under the motion? All those in favor? Any opposed, it is unanimous. Do you have anything else?
I'll say.
Okay. We have no tabled items, we have no Board of Selectmen mandatory items, we have no public comment, and we have no minutes, which leaves us to a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.